Call this meeting to order the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It is September 25th, 2019, approximately 6:04 PM. Here in Commission Chambers, 5332 East US Highway 83. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Jones, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Ramirez.
Alright, alright. Thank you all for letting us get together today, with all those that are present with us. I ask for you to pray for all our residents of Rio Grande City and thanks for the much-needed rain that we got. I ask for you to protect our law enforcement and all those that protect us from harm way. Please guide us in making the best decisions for the residents of Rio Grande City and all this, I ask for you. Amen.
Commissioner, amen.
I put the reasons to the flag, the United States of America, and the Republic of America's lands. One nation, one God, and we will do for the majority of Texas for all. Honor Texas flag, let Texas be the state of Texas, one nation.
We were almost coordinated. Alright, we'll have the robe call and finding of quorum. Ms. Spania?
Mayor Villarreal?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Flores?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Next business and orders, it's item 1C, Public Forum. Do we have anyone signed up for Public Forum? Or anyone that would wish to speak regarding any item on the agenda? No one? Moving on to item 1D, Proclamation, National 4-H Week. Do we have the... It's 1D. So, National 4-H Week, October 6th through the 12th, 2019 proclamation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Joel Villarreal, Commissioner Ednan Garza, Commissioner Florde Flores, Commissioner Dave Jones, and Commissioner Ray Ramirez. On behalf of the over 250 youth members and adult 4-H volunteers in Starr County, we are asking the city of Rio Grande City to help us in celebrating National 4-H Week, October 6th through 12th, 2019. 4-H is a national youth organization that empowers young people with skills to lead for a lifetime, from raising livestock, to photography, to community service, and leadership. Through 4-H, we pledge our heads to clear thinking, our hearts to greater loyalty, our hands to larger service, and our health to better living, for our clubs, our community, our country, and our world. We ask that you approve the 4-H proclamation that some of our 4-H members will be reading at this time. Thank you for your support of our 4-H program.
Thank you.
Whereas, the city of Rio Grande City is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of Texas A&amp;M and AgriLife Extension for 112 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas, this admirable program would seek to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and hope. Helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed productive, self-directed productive and contributing members of our society.
Whereas, its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from 8 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and social backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of this state.
Whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now, therefore, be it.
Resolved that the city of Rio Grande City hereby designates October 6th through 12th, 2019 as National 4-H Week in Texas, and commends the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success. Thank you for your support of 4-H.
Is there anyone else that would like to say a few words? Please feel free to say any words. Anyone else? Alright. Absolutely. And thank you so much for the work that you all do. Certainly, I'm sure we're gonna see many wonderful things in future of all of you here as future leaders of tomorrow. So yes, let's proceed to have a photo with our leaders as well in the extension office. Y'all come on a fence. Y'all come on a stage.
Yeah.
You want to check your picture?
Come on, piss this way.
Yes.
Can he have the left one?
Right to the back? The right hand to the back. Move to the front.
Let's see if people can be like you. Yeah. And the right hand to the left. Yeah. Besides, you don't cover adults. Come on in, we can use someone on the side.
I'm taller than him.
Can you split a little bit this way?
Oh, awesome.
Okay, will you put that right? I got another one. You think I'll screw up too? Come this way. You want to do that one? You want to come over here? I'll go if you're covering out.
If you all want to work, somebody want to stand up here, Will?
I'll go. Yeah? You got it?
I want to stand up here.
Okay, this will be my holder here. I have our proclamation, okay? We'll get it to y'all. You got it? Compliment.
Okay, we're ready. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
Call that.
Alright, congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I can tell you that the power of all the... Thank you. 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 Yes, I can tell you that the power of all the... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I can tell you that the power of all the... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I can tell you that the power of all the... Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I can tell you that the power of all the... Thank you. 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 Yeah, I cleared.
Yeah, that was...
You need to talk about the next three...
We need to talk about 4-H.
You need to talk about the next two. The A, B, and C, number two.
Two, A, B, and C.
The budget.
Well, this one's the brush fee.
The C.
The C. That one's the second reading.
Nothing's changed?
Nothing has changed, only the only thing that changed was the budget. So that's A.
Alright, there go our future leaders of tomorrow. Moving on to item two, Ordinance. Have letter A, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-2, City of Rio Grande City Municipal Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Is there anything on that one?
No. The one...
It's B, right?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. As you may recall, on the left, on the first hearing, there was some adjustments that needed to be made to the budget. I guess it was passed pending those adjustments. Those adjustments have been made as you requested, and the general fund is still in balance. We still ended up with $639 in the black. So whatever items you needed adjusted on the previous ones, they were adjusted on this one.
Alright, very good. Anything else, Mr. Perez, on the budget? Anything else? No? We're good? We're good?
Not the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the item presented.
Right.
First to be specific.
Yes.
This, the motion is...
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Mayor, I move that the City Commission adopt and approve the budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. Need a record vote. I know, but...
And we need a second?
We need a second. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Garza. At this time, we'll have a record vote.
Mayor Joel Villarreal?
In favor?
Mayor Protem Garza?
For.
Commissioner Flores?
In favor.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Four.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your efforts in this budget. I know that it took considerable time and effort, so thank you, everyone, for moving on with this budget. And obviously, we're gonna have to continuing tightening our belts and moving forward, so thank you. Next business and orders, item 2B, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-3, Levying Ad Valorem Taxes for Maintenance and Operations and for Debt Service of the Municipal Government of the City of Rio Grande City, Texas, for Tax Year Ending December 30th, 2019.
Mayor, this is line item two, I guess to pass, approve the tax increase that was passed earlier on the first meeting.
Okay.
I don't have the rate.
It's, it was just one cent. So the tax rate is 0.507579.
Yes.
And also, there's a motion there. Ready to make the motion at this time?
Sure, Mayor, I move that property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.507579, which is effectively a 4.22% increase in the tax rate.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. This time, we'll have a record vote.
Mayor Joel Villarreal?
In favor?
Mayor Protem Garza?
Four.
Commissioner Flores?
Against.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Against.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Next business and orders, item 2C, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-4, Amending the Adopted Ordinance Number 2015-2, Approving a New Rate Schedule for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Service. 2C.
And then, maybe this is a proposed increase of 2.5 on the brush.
We've had multiple discussions on this. Any further discussion before moving on? Not? Have a motion at this time?
Mayor, just one question on the... How long is it gonna take to be able to pay the truck out? The brush?
To what, I'm sorry?
How long is the long... The investment, the payment, how long? Five, four, five years?
No, we should be able to pay with the increase within two years. With that increase, because I think the increase should bring in over, a little bit over 100 every year in revenues. The first truck, I believe, is 160,000, I believe was the last.
164.
164.
But that does not include additional personnel to drive the truck?
No, sir, correct. Which will require driver and helper. Which again, was a truck plus a driver and helper. It included, it's included in this? No. It will include. It will include. Okay.
The rate change will include to cover the...
To cover those expenses.
The purchase of the equipment, but not the salaries of the employees we need to employ to get the second truck going?
Okay, so, any other questions? Not? Do we have a motion at this time?
I saw move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. We have a second?
A second motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? None? Don't need a record vote on this one, eh? For all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next business and orders, item 3, Resolutions. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2019-23, Requesting Financial Assistance from the Texas Water Development Board, Authorizing the Filing of an Application for Assistance with a Sewer Plant Expansion Project for the City of Rio Grande City.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is a resolution that's needing to be passed in order for the city to apply for a grant that's in the tune of 7.5 million dollars. These fees will be used to restore our wastewater treatment plant, upgrade it, and also increase the capacity into which it's currently at. One of the major violations that we still have open with TCEQ right now is obviously the capacity of the treatment plant. So with this money, we'd be being able to, in essence, fix that plan up and come in compliance with TCEQ.
What is the current capacity of that plant right now?
It's at 1.5. So basically, our goal and our engineer, Mr. Getta's here, we'd basically be doubling that capacity.
And we're pretty much at capacity?
We're over capacity. It's over capacity. Yeah, that's why we were cited.
Yet, the TCEQ violation calls for that. Once you reach 80%, you must be already planning. We're over the 80%.
And we've been for a couple of years now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So with this, we would also, we would be doubling our capacity. And the plans that, some of the plans that our engineer has brought to table is actually restoring the old racetrack that was previously utilized, bringing that up to code and utilizing that, and thus saving us, the city, a lot of money. Instead of having to build a whole new infrastructure, we're gonna use current existing structures that are there.
So looking at doubling the capacity, what do you foresee? How many years would that...
I'll leave that to the expert.
Help us alleviate for the next, how many years with this new upgrade? Last is, of course, based on population growth and whatnot, but just a roundabout figure would be...
It all depends, Mayor, on who hooks up and what hooks up. But based on your population group, it'll take probably another six to 10 years.
Because you're looking right now, well, with the capacity you have right now, we're at 1.5, you said?
Yes, sir.
Million gallons per day, is that...
No, that's total. 1.5 million total.
That's per day.
Per day, right? So that's a capacity per day. So you factor how many connections, you double that, because we're gonna double that. Would you say, so it'd be at about 3 million?
Yes, sir.
Per day, is that doubling the capacity?
That's what the old racetrack was at, right?
You'll have a capacity of 3 million.
Up to 3 million if need be, which, alright. So that would be...
I guess if you think about it...
I know we're being conservative with the years as far as the numbers, but doubling the capacity at this point, now, should we go even more than doubling it then? Now this potential, now that we're doing it, is that, would it be, I guess, something wise for us to do, to let's say...
If you knew there was gonna be a large surge in growth, and you would have to be domestic growth, which, you're going to build a whole sewer of hotels or something like that. If, once you reach 75%, 70% is supposed to start, and...
Right.
Once you hit 80, 90%, you should be in construction. And you're at about 85%.
Yes, sir.
But it costs you roughly about anywhere from, I guess, 1.5 million to 2 million dollars per G D to build capacity in it.
So for example, this seven, what was it again? The 7. how much?
7.5.
So 7.5 million grant.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that's a grant that we're considering. And if awarded at this, well, that's something that if awarded, or what do we...
That's if awarded. Now, keep in mind that there is a 70% match.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, right, Mr. Perez?
There's not 100% coverage.
Yeah, it's not 100%.
Right, and the coverage would be what percentage?
70% of the grant.
70% coverage, so we'll, let's say, put in the 30%.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, at this point, if we go, let's say, 40%, would that help us in the long run? Because obviously, whatever we build now is gonna cost a lot more 10 years from now.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, just in thinking about something, maybe that's something we need to consider as we're moving forward.
I will say this, Mayor, that our engineers have forecasted for that growth, and in their plans, they've also added some additional clarifiers that will be constructed as well too, so... In that sense, they are planning ahead in designing some additional clarifiers that will be installed, constructed as well too. And that's considered in this amount as too. Am I correct, Mr. Getta? That 7.5 is also including the clarifier, the new clarifier? So, the capacity...
Really, what I would like to consider is maybe planning for the next 20 years, let's say, as opposed to the next seven or 10. So is it possible to plan with this for the next 20 years as opposed to just taking us for the next six or seven? Because then, and again, that's something we can follow up to.
Makes sense.
But just keep that in mind as we're moving forward with this plan.
Yes, sir.
Technology's changing, and the recent, typically, if you were gonna double the capacity in a...
You'd have to build a new...
Yes, and you're looking at 16 million plus to begin with. Right. We're able to do it a lot cheaper because of the new technology that's come out and utilizing existing infrastructure that we already have there. That's why, so if you were to go to any other city and they're trying to double capacity, you know, they're probably would say, you're gonna start at 16 million plus. So in this case, it's at 7.5, and it's a little higher because after we met with the folks in Austin, they advised us to go a little higher because there's always gonna be things that change. But we anticipate that technology's gonna continue to change, that we might be able to take advantage of existing infrastructure and possibly increasing capacity without having to spend the millions of dollars the traditional way. So I know technology's changed every, what, three to five years in that area?
What that number includes is we have the racetrack and bringing it up to where you can treat it, 1.5, and then also, we have components of the way from the plant that need. We have the concluding, tacking, the slug handling, the new clarifier. We have the state maintenance station, the headworks, all that stuff. But if you want it, for instance, the existing that you have now is 1.5. If you want it, to build another one of those and do the rehab, it would be around 10 million dollars rather than the 7.5. And of course, that number also includes a pretty hefty contingency, like half a million dollars of contingency.
Yes, sir.
So, in reality, the design work, we've done some feasibility. We've actually contacted contractors to see what it costs to clean this like out, what it costs to, you know, to rehab this, and that's what we came up with. We've got some real numbers. Because once you ask for the money, it's hard to ask for more. You're only short of what you need either, so...
And as far as, did you all meet with the engineers that came and met with us? I don't remember their names, Mr. Perez. The ones that looked at our existing infrastructure and they were actually... Yes.
Yes, sir, we did.
Commenting about that we could actually implement it in our existing infrastructure to... Yes. Be able to... And we're looking at that. Maximize...
Yes, sir, we did. The approach that Mr. Getta has presented though, like I said, we kind of have, it's a blessing in disguise because that old racetrack that's sitting there, what the engineers that we talked to, they had no plans of using that old racetrack. After meeting with Mr. Getta and saying, hey, what can we do with this facility? He brought in his experts, and we were able to find that we actually could restore this racetrack, essentially doubling the capacity, not just bringing a little bit of, you know, increasing the capacity, but doubling it to the 3 million. And having a huge cost savings to the city, because like you said, you're looking at almost double the amount. So it's almost a blessing to have that racetrack sitting there. Obviously, they had to get in there, and myself and Mr. Perez had met with some contractors to see what it would cost to clean out all that, that sludge that's in there. But essentially, that's gonna be a huge cost savings to the city, having that, restoring that facility.
Okay, at this time, do we...
I've got a question, Mr. Cruz. So what's option B if we do not get this grant loan?
There's a loan. There's a loan option, and then there's also a contingency plan that they approached us with, with phasing it out. The first phase would be the design phase, design and engineering and plan phase, and then the next approach would be when we come back the following year to go after the actual money that would be needed to actually do the construction. Right now, and to kind of update, I guess, if you don't mind, Mr. Perez, to kind of update on the last meeting that we had, we're number nine on the list right now. And I think it was told to us they'd probably award anywhere between five and six top... Yeah, just depending on how much money's awarded. So between myself, Lizette, Mr. Perez, Leo, and our engineers, we've all been kind of working together to try to make sure we have that application in in time. This is a very crucial part, because without this resolution...
Right.
It's all for nothing. So we're trying to get in there, and I know we're making our contacts. You know, I've got some contacts, I know Mr. Perez has contacts, and Mr. Getta's been talking to Texas Water Board of Development as well too to see how we can wiggle ourselves somewhere up there to at least be able to have an opportunity to fight for some money.
And these are the same folks that we met with in Austin during our, some of those meetings that we had?
And I think Commissioner Ramirez went up with us at a meeting as well too when we met with them.
Great, fantastic. Now, the amount that they will pass on to us as a grant is the same. Whether we increase it or not...
Yeah.
It's set from them. So the rest of the difference will have to come out of a loan. They do offer loans themselves at a lower rate, so that we talk about all the option A, B, and C, so that we will be ready for whatever... Well, first step is to get it, right?
Yeah.
And then we can move from there and decide what course of action.
And when we decide, they gap on the grant amount for me. Where you go after each other, and after can, and if you qualify for the grant, or you get the formative.
So even if it's 10 million dollars, we still have to come up with that 6 million dollars. But to answer your question, that was the approach that they recommended for us, Commissioner. It was, at worst case, if we don't, we phase it out.
Phase it out.
And so it'll obviously be a two-year process for us to kind of get the whole funding for this project.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? If not, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I saw move, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza.
Record vote.
Oh, record vote?
Mayor Villarreal?
Favor?
Mayor Protem Garza?
Four.
Commissioner Flores?
Four.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Four.
Resolution passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Next business and orders, item 4, Contracts and Agreements. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Award Contract to Granchelli, Construction LLC for the Los Olmos Creek West Bank Channel Improvements, Infrastructure to Support Commercial Center for the EDA Project, Number 080105074.
Mayor, I move to table this item until we have time to discuss this item in executive session with legal under section 551.071.
Okay, so we have a motion to take this item to executive. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. Was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Next business and orders, item 4B, Discussion and Possible Action to Award Contract to Five Star Clark for the 12 water line and hydrant that will enable us to do Phase 1 of the infrastructure to support commercial center for the EDA Project, Number 080105074. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a part of the project that the contractor is asking for in the front end in order to enable them to take care of any dust that's gonna be flying while they're constructing, plus they're also gonna use that water for compacting the dirt. So it's a piece of the puzzle.
We're extending that line further, but this is just a piece of the puzzle to get them water that they need to be able to get started.
Any? Any questions?
The lowest bidder that came in for this part of the puzzle was a five star at 40,017.78.
Okay, do we have a, any other questions? Do we have a motion at this time?
I saw more.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 4C. Discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with Rio Delta Engineering to provide inspection services for the Los Olmos Creek West Bank Channel improvements. Infrastructure to support commercial center for the EDA project number 080105074. Ms. Benz, you wanna talk about that?
Yes. So, as we went up for agreement and then last man, there was only one coastal level trend in Rio Delta for the inspection services. We waited this time until we are actually right at starting item destruction. Talking to the director, the head of the San Diego Corso, contract review by attorney, and recommend some changes when we're done, and by place the credit agreement with the Spanish there. So it's ready basically to go soon as construction starts, and there are any books to start inspection services.
Okay. Any? Any questions, any issues with this, any thing that we need to be aware of? If not, any other questions by commission? Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza. Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. She carries. Next is item 5, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on preliminary and final approval of the St. Ives subdivision in Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas.
You all have your package. The memo, and this is attached to the planning and zoning with the conditions you have loaded there in the memo. I know that working with the, the planning engineer in Rio Delta, they're still working on getting some items before we form this plan. It is important that this is, otherwise, the item that was just passed to the line, the coverage water line, will not be able to get done, because that is, it has to be first reported. So the plan is in order as far as the processes, that's why they're detailed. We went through the preliminary stretches, we went through the final checklists, the checklists before we formed, and the consulting engineers' comments. Like, so we have been getting some of the items, the document, the rights that we said to come ago. And we're just planning on the rights.
Okay, just referring back to this, still see Radler Drive, is there, you know, we had this lengthy discussion about this?
We have, have we given any name?
No.
I don't know if anyone has submitted any names to House or...
Not any new ones, eh? But we can still go back on this, are we?
Okay, in a minute, but
Okay. Alright.
I feel like, as I said, we're just waiting for the contract agreements and of course, the issue about what rights. Make sure we have a order.
Okay, and any issues with planning and zoning, nothing that?
No, sir.
No, alright. Okay.
I understand the mission of the website, this is a project with very tight time constraints, so they know that it's, there's some issues that are happening before, and that eventually, when it gets down to abandoning the contract after the formal assessment, then those are the parts that are, are
Any other questions by commission? If not, do entertain a motion at this time?
I saw more.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second, mayor.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next is item 5B, discussion and possible action on preliminary approval of the plantation view subdivision in Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas.
Yes, mayor, commissioner, this is a 31 lot, residential lots in the area known as Los Trevino. This is on the west side of Oil South Road. West side of Palma Street. It's a single lot residential, it's gonna be serviced by the City of Rio Grande, and each water line and sewer line also. 31 lots averaging 0.24 of an acre. And this subdivision is for preliminary only, has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in their last meeting of September the 10th. It's all residential.
Any further discussion? Not at this time, entertain a motion?
I saw more.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next is item 6, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and section 551.074, personnel matters. It is 6:30 PM. Back to the executive session, it is 8:29 PM. And returning back to item 4A. Discussion and possible action to award contract to Granchelli Construction LLC for the Los Olmos Creek West Bank Channel improvements. Infrastructure to support commercial center for the EDA project number 080105074. Okay?
Mayor, looking at motion to table this item, there are issues, legal EDA need to coordinate. We will take action next week at special board meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next is, well, back to item 7A. Just discussion and possible action regarding legal issues, there was no action there. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding legal issues concerning certain, certain city fees, there's no action there. And item C, discussion and possible action regarding personnel matters, and there's no action at this time. Have a motion to adjourn.
I saw more.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.